All set up front? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 20th, 2024 regular meeting. If you could all join me in standing, saying Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's start off with the Administrator's Report on the Agenda Posting and Notification of the Meeting to the Media.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School, and the town of Sugar Camp via email, the town of Three Lakes, the town of Monaco, and at the Demer Library. And the media notified included the Villas County News, the Northwoods River News, the WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
Very good, thank you for that report. Next, we go to amendments and approval of agenda. And we do have one amendment, correct?
Yes, I'd like to move the Nexus Study C down to after K, Winter Sports.
Okay. All right, and that'll get us to some of the co-ops in case some of the coaches show up. And, all right, any other amendments?
No, not tonight.
All right. I will take a motion. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment as stated.
Second.
All right, so a motion by Stacy and second by Michelle. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard, motion passes five zero. And just a note, we do have Alicia that is joining us through the phone here, so we do have five board members actually present for the meeting. Thank you. So we can proceed on to approvals of the amendments of February 21st, 2024, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 21st, 2024, regular meeting.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Michelle, second by Josh. Any other questions or comments pertaining to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call to vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed? None heard, motion does pass, five zero. Next, we go to the approved vouchers/checked register for the period of February 16th, 2024 through March 14th, 2024.
I'll make the motion to approve checks dated February 16th, 2024 through March 14th, 2024 for accounts payable ACH checks number 232400202 through 232400237, regular checks number 129410 through 129504, manual checks number 5633 through 5644, and wire transfer numbers 202300016 through 202300038 in the amount of $380,036.81. And ACH payroll checks number 900042332 through 900042449, and regular payroll checks number 59339 through 59349 in the amount of $197,300-- I'm sorry, $197,319.20 for a total amount of $577,356.11.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I will call a motion to vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard, motion does pass, five zero. Next, we go to public comments. Does anyone wish to speak tonight to an agenda item? All right, we will move forward, thank you, and go to the Administrator's Report, starting with idea 2023, LEA Determinations Update, Terri.
Okay, I will keep this very brief, but over the last few years, Carrie Volk and myself have been keeping you up to date on our compliance, our federal compliance with our special education programming. And if you remember, a few years ago, that we were identified for some areas, especially in the learning environment, and making sure that our students have full opportunities regardless of them being a special ed or a regular education student. And this year, I'm very happy to report that we came in at a very nice score of 88 out of 100, and we are meeting all requirements in all of our buildings, programs, as well as district level. So we are on the right track. It's been, you know, a haul in making some things change and keeping what's best for kids in mind, but it's unusual this year because in the past, we were able to talk to you a little bit about it when we do some of our data updates, but where it's just coming out now, we couldn't give this information to you earlier. And because it's sensitive information, I am not going to publish it. I just want you to know that we are in a very good place. Carrie, did you want to share anything specific to this?
Just some great improvements being made, staff, students. Everybody's working hard to make some improvements in closing those gaps between our general students and special ed students. So we've seen some nice gains. I think the first year I was here, we were at 72%, and we were identified as needing assistance. So if we weren't able to make any of those changes, we would have been identified again. So things are heading in the right direction, and we're seeing some nice gains. So kudos to everybody who's working hard.
Absolutely.
What are some of the parameters that they look at?
They look at the learning environment, how much time a special education student is with their peers in the regular classroom versus a pull-out program, their testing rate, whether they're doing testing as it applies to what other kids are being tested, even if there's modifications, are they participating? Those are a couple of the big ones.
Yeah, they look at like transitioning, preschool transitioning, timely evaluations. We have to finish our evaluations in a certain amount of time. Like Terri said, the big one was ed environment, where we had, we weren't scoring any points previously, so that one has, we'd make some nice gains in that area. Post-secondary plans, those are some of the areas that they look at.
Graduation rates, that's an important one. So yeah, they have 13 indicators plus that we look through, and including demand in ELA proficiencies.
Very good, yeah, that's good news.
Yes, very good.
All right, any questions on that? All right, thanks to everyone involved, and yeah, keep up the good work. Next, we want to go to the Act 20 update?
Right, and just because I know you can't get enough of Act 20, there's a little part two. It's just the little one. Since we met last time, there has been some legislation that's been finalized, and I wanted just to bring you up to speed on that. The four curricula that were identified include bookworms, reading and writing, core knowledge, a language arts program, EL program, and a wit and wisdom. This is not our program, however, our program that we're doing here ranked in the top 11, which was what the DPI had recommended, and that didn't get approved. However, they're all acceptable, provided they meet the same criteria, which they do. And just today, this afternoon, they released what's called the crosswalk. And in that crosswalk, we could go ahead and verify documenting how our curriculum currently meets the requirements of Act 20, which it does, it's very strong. We selected it based on, a few years ago, as you know, before we knew any of this was coming down, but what we needed to do based on the science of reading and what we saw as areas that we needed to improve. So that is actually good news. I wanted to remind you that when you hear that there's $50 million available for reimbursement, that is really going to be very little money because it's going, it will be used to pay for districts who apply partially towards these four curriculums, but it's also for the position to monitor and administer the early literacy council. It's also for the additional reading coaches that will be issued statewide. It's the initial kickoff in training for the brand-new screener, which has not yet been determined. So just to give you an idea, in Mississippi, when this was done, they spent $650 million. So $50 million is not going to go very far. So I don't want the board to feel bad, saying, well, we're missing out on some kind of funding for the curriculum we have, because it is prorated, as I mentioned last year, and it's only going to be a very small fraction. So we're very pleased and committed to what we're doing, and this isn't a barrier. This doesn't hinder us from going forward. Another thing I wanted to share with you is on that screener. The screener still hasn't been selected. We are hearing, hopefully by July 1st, it'll be released, and then we will have to train staff in how to administer it. With that, it has come down that we do not have to be doing the first training, or the first screening, it's not required, as it was written in the law originally. However, if we get the information, and we are trained, and we are ready, because we screened, we would look at that, doing that, you know, because we don't want to double up. And it's really difficult to start something mid-year without having your data to compare to. That's a big question mark yet, it depends when it comes down. It's supposed to be available, and I said supposed to be available, so districts can address it during in-service trainings, but that is not a certainty yet. That is a hope. And so that's really the most up-to-speed that I have with you on those few issues attached to Act 20. Do you have any more questions at the moment? Because I like to talk about it, you can always call me if you have more questions.
No, I just comment, I appreciate you being proactive on it and looking ahead right from the very beginning, picking up the task of looking into the science of reading and initiating that program well before it was required.
Well, we have some very strong people working here, including Amy Johnson, and you know, Stephen and Todd have been instrumental and kept right, you know, up to date with things that are going on as well, so it's a team effort. But she's led the charge and helped us make sure we're not missing anything.
Great. All right, very good. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to new business and start off with the April meeting dates.
Okay, so our regular meeting is scheduled for April 17th at 6:00 here in the boardroom.
All right, so no changes there?
No.
One I'm going to bring up. In the past, for district administrators, review, eval, performance evaluation, prior to the pandemic, we were doing them in February, March, and then we moved to May, I think even June.
It's been June.
And if the board is interested, we could do something in April, if that was something of interest, or if you just wanted to wait until the new board member was seated and do it at that time. My seat expires the fourth Monday, so it'd have to be between, well, I'm going to be gone the first couple of weeks of April, so it'd have to be the last two weeks in April for myself, if that was of interest. So just wondering what some of the board members' suggestions, comments would be if you wanted to do that before, is it the 26th?
22nd.
Yeah, really, it's just leaving that third week.
I'm fine with trying to squeeze it in, I mean--
Makes sense, since you're senior, and that a new person wouldn't have as much to--
Contribute.
Thank you.
Maybe one meeting.
Right, right.
So adding it on to the 4/17 meeting?
Well, could, they tend to be long.
That's right.
That meeting in itself usually is a long meeting in itself, and we might have a busy agenda for April.
We will.
Okay. So it might be best if we had a separate date. Alicia, any input on this?
I have no problem doing an extra meeting at the end of April. I'm fine with that.
Okay, so our regular meeting is the 20th.
It's 17th.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right month here. Okay, so 17th, so sometime during the week of 20th. What's that?
Is the 24th, that's the only Wednesday after.
That's after my seat expires as well.
One, two, three, four, it's a 22nd, yeah. It'd have to be the 18th, actually, it'd have to be the 18th or 19th. Now I got the right month here in front of me. I believe-- I'm trying to check, but it probably have to be the 19th for me. I think I have, I have to see if I have an ump. Or what about the 16th? I might be in the same-- Not any better?
Trying to, I'm trying to remember my login on the spot here.
If it's on the 17th, because that is done in closed session, we could just plan for it, if we want to be very time efficient. I know it doesn't give you a lot of choices.
18, I'm free on the 18th.
You are?
Yeah. I am not on the 16th, however.
Okay, so Thursday is available, the 18th. Michelle, how about you?
I can make either work.
Okay. Alicia? 18th, is that?
Um, yeah, my preference would either be the 18th or to go late on the 17th.
Okay. Okay. It could go into the 18th if we start on the 17th.
He speaks the truth.
Yeah. Stacy, what would be your preference?
Either way.
It would be saving everybody a trip if we just--
Run a trial?
Do we start early? Right, do we start at 5:00, push the meeting early again?
Headway for me.
A little extra.
Is that good, Alicia?
Five, the 17th.
Early on the 17th, at 5:00?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we'll start that regular meeting at 5:00. So that's basically all we'll need is a motion for starting the regular meeting at 5:00.
I'll make a motion to set the April meeting for April 17th with a starting time of 5:00 p.m.
Second.
All right, so a motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion does pass, five zero. There we go. Okay, bring coffee. All right, here we go. Next, we go to consider approval, the Student Council Overnight Trip. We have students, all right.
So hello, my name is Will. I'm one of the Student Council co-presidents, and I'm speaking on behalf of the entire Student Council. And I would like to propose an overnight spring trip on Sunday, April 7th, and to Monday, April 8th. And pending approval, we will be going to the Wilderness Resort in the Wisconsin Dells on Sunday morning, and we'll return around 3:00 p.m. on Monday. We have chaperones covered, and it's 100% funded by the Student Council. We also agree that whatever we spend on our evening dinner that night, that we will match the donation to the Fork Pantry. Last year's donation was $600. And then, so we basically think that this should be a thing, because we have worked really hard all year. We work on homecomings, seruji sales, basketball concessions, blood drives, a lot of the stuff, dress-up days, everything. So we think that because our Student Council works so hard, that we should be able to have a little fun along with it. So this would also help us become more of a team and united, and it would be, help us with organizational skills. It also helps the freshmen look up to the seniors a little bit more and help that bond a little bit. So we feel like this trip would make us overall more cohesive group and stronger. So with your approval, we would love to go.
Very good. Any questions?
All right. Will it be the same setup as last year, where it's, as far as like, how was it as far as like rooms go? Where it's kind of a one big unit? Girls in one and boys in another kind of deal?
We went with like four people in each room, I don't know.
Okay.
And it was obviously boys and girls separated, so.
Someone prepare to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Student Council Overnight Trip to the Wisconsin Dells as presented.
Second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Josh. Last call for questions or comments.
I'll make one comment if I can. I just want to say thank you, they work so incredibly hard in so many service-oriented activities. So you are very appreciated, and to put up for Fork, again, taking care of others, I just think that's very admirable and speaks so well to the true culture and characteristics of the group, and I really appreciate it, so thank you, and please share that with the rest of the Student Council. Thank you.
Very good. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed? None heard? Motion does pass by a sweeping five zero. You are approved, and thank you very much, that was a great presentation, by the way, too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Very nice.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next, we are leapfrogging over the Nexus. And we're going to consider purchase of bleachers at Sugar Camp School.
The reason this is coming before you is because it would be a big purchase, and with some of the moving parts right now that we have with what we are going to do, I think it's really important that you hear what this would look like, what that would cost. In our last meeting, both Todd and Jack talked about some options to make the gym, as it currently stands, more functional, to get more seating within there, changing some of the lines and such, you know, and how it could be utilized with, if we don't have another gym, you know, more room. So I thought we were probably going to be talking about the facilities update, but that's okay. We can talk about this now, because what I think, whether we decide, or you decide, I should say, that this is something that we go forward with at the current time, and we need to bring it to you now if we're going to, because they have to be ordered, assembled, and then, you know, installed and ready for when the new school year would begin. It is a need, you know, we've talked about the need in Sugar Camp. It maybe doesn't rise to the top as much as some of the others do, but with that, I just wanted to set the stage and let you know that's why this is coming before you. And Todd, you presented, or you shared a presentation, which I did go ahead and--
Oh, they have it?
They have it, yep. So if you would like to just talk through it, certainly can, or I guess Mr. Whales.
Put my glasses on, sorry. So everyone knows that we have a shortage of space, especially in Sugar Camp, and the problem became really apparent this past couple of years with the younger basketball teams playing. We have parents standing up, the seating capacity's pretty much maxed out, and it's becoming an issue with usage in the gym. And Sugar Camp Gym gets used quite a bit. So short of putting up an addition, we looked at the problem, and an idea came up that we could narrow down the courts a little bit and maybe get some more space on the one side where the bleachers are. So we started looking at that. We were actually brought in the company that did the bleachers here in Three Lakes and the little gym there, and they came up with a proposal where we can gain more seating. It comes in around $30,000 in that approximate price range, which to solve the problem that we're having, we think is money well spent. So if you look at the highlights and stuff, a couple of things, and I'm just going to go through it real quick, is we do have some maintenance issues with the older bleachers that we have. They're old wood, we have to take and varnish them, we have to take and clean them. We have to make sure that there's no slivers, there are safety issues with it. The new bleachers, if you look, and there's a picture in there of them, are plastic. The new bleachers are actually up to code. They had, come with the rails, they come with the side rails, the handrails. They have seating for handicapped in them, and they have stairs going up them. The present bleachers do not have that, they're stepping over the seats, and at some point in time, there could be an accident, and someone falling and hurting themselves there. We had a number of proposals when we looked at the bleachers, whether it be in a four row, we tried to add one more row to what we have, or a five-row section, or a six-row. We talked with Mr. Baseman, Mr. Baseman felt that we couldn't get a six or a five in there and still do what we want to do with our basketball court. That's why we went with the four row. And the way that it's laid out, we're actually going to put some lines on the inside of the present basketball court, about two and a half, three feet in. We're going to shrink down the court when we have the second and third grade games, and then those bleachers would extend out, and they'd be safely used, even though that they're bigger than the ones we have now. Was that chairs?
Yeah, it's like--
Yeah. Also, by pulling the lines in the other side, we can add chairs on the wall where the kitchen serving is. So if we had to, we could get another 50 chairs or so over on that side. All total, that would give us approximately 80 more seats, which is a lot. So, but that's what we're looking at doing. We did talk to the manufacturer yesterday. If we decided to do this, and in the future, if we wanted to take and put an addition on, we can add more bleachers to these bleachers that we would purchase. So we could turn the four rows into eight rows if we wanted to, if we wanted to move it into a bigger gym, per se. Also, in the conversation, they're booked now until, I think, October 14th, and I think we're off two days around that time, and they could fit it into their schedule, coming in and installing the bleachers at that point in time. And that's kind of why-- And that's kind of why we have to move fairly quick on.
So their 16 weeks isn't really 16 weeks?
No. Do you guys have any questions on, on anything? You can see what they look like. They're basically the same bleachers that are in the other gym, here in Three Lakes. And I think we touched pretty much the important things on the presentation that you guys should have gotten.
Jack, is this the new length?
My math was incorrect. So it is, it is 67.
Okay.
How many additional seats would it give with the five-row?
It would be another 30.
Okay.
But then that, that fifth row, when they're extended out, one of those pictures has some blue tape on the floor. The first blue tape is the inside line of the new, smaller court for the second and third graders. This middle piece of blue tape is how far a fifth line would extend, or a fifth row would extend out.
That one's not in here, Jack?
Yeah, we don't have that.
Oh, my gosh.
I've got it. I've got it.
Slide six. Unless you got a PDF of it.
Yeah, we PDF.
Sorry about that.
I can text Alicia. Alicia, I'll text you a picture.
Thank you.
All right, and put it on the screen, too.
So current seating is what, Jack?
About 120.
120. You said this would be 80 additional seats.
That includes the seats on the other side.
So chairs?
If we put the chairs on, yeah.
Okay. So this is 30 additional seats.
So a row would gain us 30, but it would also bring us then up to code and compliance on everything. We, you would, the newer bleachers have the steps going up. There's two rows of steps, where you lose a little bit of seating.
Okay. Did they pull out the old bleachers?
We would be responsible for removing them.
That would be, okay.
Do you need some wood, though?
I think they got rid of everything here at Three Lakes. So, I shouldn't say rid, I think it was.
Used.
Yeah.
Who was there?
Repurposed.
Oh, this cord has been?
Todd, it's the one on the TV that was.
It's got to be this one, the HDMI.
There we go.
So this is how far, so this is your, your end line or your sideline line? This would be where the fourth row comes out? This would be where if you did a five-row, it would be, the end of it would be into the court? And then this is where the proposed new sideline would be to kind of narrow it?
Even if you do a four-row, is that where you would put the new line? Or would you?
Yeah, we, Jeff recommends that we put that line right there.
Thank you, sir. There's like.
He said, you want to have four, four feet.
You could, I mean, if you had a game going on, and you wanted space, you could take your five-row and push it in, correct?
Yes.
And use it as a four?
Yep. We could extend it out two rows, we could extend it out three, whatever we wanted to.
What other events would you use besides like a basketball game? The Christmas program is now being held in Three Lakes here.
Yeah, we have spring concert, Easter Day, we have monthly assemblies.
Grandparents' Day.
Grandparents' Day.
So could you use the five? Five-row?
Defer that one.
I mean, we're currently at 120 students, and I mean, if we have 130, the four-row would still seat that. My fear with going with five is that, whatever, we're at 180, then our bleachers look empty. You know, then you got 120 kids sitting on something that holds 180, and it's this, you got a lot of blank space, so. I get the idea of like having more space, but I don't know if. If we get to 180 students, which is a great problem, I don't know where we're going to put them in the classrooms, so.
Bigger issues first at that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And I think the cost savings was.
It was five grand. All five thousand, so.
Okay. What is, question, what is your recommendation? Because there's two levels in the proposal. So what is your recommendation, the four or the five-row?
So Jack and I had a lot of conversations, and we recommend the four. Just the way it works, as far as, I mean, we're, we're adding more seats already, we're getting the steps, the handrails, all that stuff, so.
So the one other thing, too, is if we only extended, say we had the five, and we extended out only three rows, are we fighting with young kids then climbing on the back of the bleachers? You know, are we risking someone possibly falling off of it? Yeah, it's a shortfall, but is that some, something that we want to have an issue with?
Well, we can always add, if we can add another four sections to make eight, we could add another section to make five, too, down the road.
Yeah.
As is, you're already gaining 40% or more. 40% without the chair, without the chairs.
Exactly, yeah, you're gaining 30 seats in the bleachers, plus whatever you gain on the sideline on the opposite end, in chairs.
That also comes with a built-in scores table. So we don't have to worry anymore about kids running into the side of a table set up there.
Do we have a table?
Yes, there's a table.
Oh. Is the four feet from the front of the bleachers recommended? Or is that code? Can we maybe do three? If we were to remind it?
I think if we, if we were to go, say, with the four rows, I think we could probably adjust that inside line to what we would feel comfortable with. I would have to double check with Jeff, but I'm not aware of a code on it. That's his recommendation.
I guess I would like to see, if we went with the four-row, I would like, if we were going to put a new line, I would like to see it no more than where the five-row bleacher line is. Because otherwise, you're really losing a lot. Especially when you figure it's on both sides.
Can I ask a question? Have we, have we talked about just moving the entire court, including the baskets, is that feasible?
On the backside of this, you'd get really, really close to the wall.
It's, yeah, it's.
It's already maybe 30 inches. Again, you're narrowing it, doing lines.
All right. Any other questions? So we've identified a need. I guess that's, that's, I think, pretty much proven from what I can tell here. The question becomes, is this something that we want to do now? Do we want to move ahead with this? Or do we wait until we further see, I guess, a clearer picture with the Nexus facility updates, so.
Do we have funding to do it now? Yeah, we have funding available. This, this wouldn't have been scheduled based on what we do with the referent, with the potential for a referendum. This would go into our deferred maintenance. And that's a big ticket item, but we did last year the small gym, and we knew that Sugar Camp would be coming.
I think the fact that we can expand and, expand them, I don't know if, I'm, I'm not hung up on waiting for the Nexus. I mean, the need is there. You, you go there for a, for a kid's event, like, like Grandparents' Day, or any one of them, and that whole bleacher is packed full. Those poor teachers are packed in just as tight as the kids. And I mean, they do really good with it, but I think it would be a welcome change.
It would be nice to have some separation between classes, too, during our assemblies, and even during like, if we have inside recess in the morning, we, the kids usually sit there, sit there, because we don't have like an assembly area for them, we don't have a commons. So if they're not eating breakfast, they're sitting on the bleachers, so. Sorry, yeah.
I can see a benefit on the safety part of it as well.
We did do a tie-in to kind of like the branding of the colors of the school. If we do go ahead with this, or even if we don't go ahead with this, we're still going to do some painting in the gym, touch-up painting, and tie it more into the hallway that we did last summer. So that is on our maintenance schedule.
And what options do we have as far as competing bids on this? What options do we have on, on this for competing bids?
For the bleachers? I did not get any of them, just because they didn't exist here.
Okay. Do we have other vendors that would supply this exact equipment, or is this, is this manufactured by the Goodson Company? Or is it, are they just a reseller?
I believe that they do all the assembly, and putting together of it. I believe that the stuff comes, and I'm thinking most of it comes from China, the way that it sounds, looking at it. They do design it, and then he talked about when it comes in that they, they do all the assembly, and then we put it together.
But it's, it's the same model as what we have?
Yes.
That's the one side in the junior high gym, it's exactly the same as that.
Have you seen the ones in the, the new ones that we got?
I have not seen those yet.
There's a picture of, so that's a four-row bunk there, they look identical.
It just wouldn't have these cutouts for there.
So obviously, maintenance or whatever, do they ever come in and do maintenance? Or is that all done by us?
I'm, I would have to check on that if they, I'm sure they're available to do it. But I don't foresee anything on there that we couldn't do ourselves, once that's all.
Okay. But having some commonality, I guess, between the two pieces of equipment would be a benefit. I can see that. Okay. Other questions?
I'm here, it says exclude electrical work. So they're not going to hook it up, you would have to do that?
We have to do the connection from the bleachers themselves to.
So it's pretty simple?
Yeah.
Do we have to change the wiring that's there?
No, we did, well, we have to lower it a little bit. So the wiring that's against the wall where the clock ties in, we have to lower that about two feet. It would still be behind the bleachers, but is the plug-in that they use.
Sure.
All right, no other further questions. I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to the proposal as presented for the four benches. Four rows, thank you.
I'll second that. All right, motion by.
I will.
Motion by Stacy, second by Josh. Did you have a question or comment, Alicia?
No, I'm having a hard time hearing. I was going to second.
Okay, all right, very good. All right. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call to vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye? I didn't hear Alicia.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, so motion passes. I'm sorry, any, any nays? None heard. The motion passes five-zero, and we will proceed ahead and replace our current bleachers. Thank you for all your work on this, and making that a better option for our parents and our students.
I think they'll really appreciate it.
Yeah, and staff as well, that's for sure. All right, very good. Next, we go to consider approval of the personnel report of the new hires and resignations.
All right, the personnel reports include this month's hirings. Griffin Schroder for baseball program assistant, and Tony Lorbescu for softball program assistant. And resignations, Jennifer Frank, paraprofessional.
All right, someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
All right, so motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed. Motion passes five-zero. Next, we go to consider approval of the CISA Shared Services Contract.
The CISA contract comes before you every year at about this time. And we need to get it done, so they can go ahead and plan for their staffing and such. This year is very much like it's been the last few years. I can just run quickly through it. The Continuous School Improvement Service Membership, that's what the main thing that we do by belonging with CISA. That has stayed the same in the cost, and that's at $13,310. And then the Continuing School Improvement Services, this is those contracted days, what we contract out when I talk to you about doing the leadership training, about doing the things that we're doing with literacy, all of the professional development. That's the cost for 20 days, and we've been doing that for the past three years. So that is something that we've been doing, you know, for a while. You'll see there's several that are no charge, that's our academic and career planning. Our bet, let's see, our career pathways. We have, we belong to the Consortium for the CTE, because we get such a small amount. It's more cost-effective for us to sign our $906 to CISA, and then they provide much larger-scale services for us, because there are several schools that come together that way. Let's see what else we have here. The, just going down here. We have the 114 for the Comprehensive School Health Services. In addition, we have the Inspire. That's the database we've been working through with the workforce development, and it gives our students an opportunity. our students an opportunity to learn about careers as well as career providers, employers, to learn more and connect more easily with our students. And Ryan Bach really heads that up. This is the new one, and this is called instructional material support. What this really is, is think of it as library and media services. We don't have a licensed media specialist with us. Katie Butnick has been doing it for us the past two years. She's in a program. She's learning and being trained. She's on a conditional license or, you know, a license with stipulations. But the reason we really need to get professional above what Katie is capable of doing and myself is because the DPI has required that all districts have a library plan, a formalized library plan, and it's very deep, intensive. It's kind of similar to when Steve a few years ago had to do like the technology plan. It's really some heavy lifting. And so if I'm contracting the days out, I was able to get ten days for this cost, and then they will come in and they will be working with us to write this plan. Once this plan is in place, it's going to be reviewed every year, but it should take care of us for five years. And once you have a plan, then you can keep working from it and updating it. With the legalities and all of the different challenges going on within the state at this point and the policies that are required, I think it's really very important for the district, for our own coverage and liability, that we have experts helping us complete this project. And yes, this is another one of those unfunded mandates that surprised us, that came again. So.
Okay.
So that is why that is there. We wouldn't see that cost in the future. I would not foresee that, but I think to get where we need to be, it's a very, it's a reasonable cost that we would contract through. Turning the page. You'll see the rest of the Wisconsin information, the WISE report, that's where we see data when you have like the school report cards and things come out. That's that connection to that. There's not a charge. The digital learning collaborative, the Resource Center for Charter Schools, the Wisconsin Safe and Healthy School Center, there's no charge there. We have the availability of getting resources as we need them. We do have a contract as needed with Deffin and Heart of Hearing. That's to be determined. They don't have a cost set with that. Carrie, are we kind of expecting what we've been doing the past few years?
Yep.
So I can give you an update on that. Right now, we're just basically committing to we need it, and then I can give you an updated cost when that is determined. And then the same with the audiologist. It's a very specialized field. And then, let's see here, our last one is our vision impairment teacher. They already have that contract in place, and for the year it will cost us five thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Their administrative costs are there every year. That's the administration of having the building, the CISA building, maintaining it, and contributing towards the, all the costs that the people who run CISA, you know, are involved in. And then McNeil, that is our environmental studies. They come in a couple of times a year, and they do a study of our safety, our OSHA compliance, things of that nature. So are there questions specific to this contract?
None here. All right, we have no questions. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the CISA share services contract for 2024 through 2025.
Second.
Sorry. Second.
All right, motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. Any other questions, comments? I will call a motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes five zero. All right, so you have approved contract there, Terry?
Thank you.
Next we go to the consider approval of the boys' baseball co-op with Phelps for 2024, 2025, and 2025 through 2026.
I've got a few handouts to pass around here. Please take one from each of the stacks. Pick them up together. As you take these sheets, you'll see that you've got four sheets. The top one is called the combined enrollment numbers and projections. And, you know, Jason and I talk about these things, and we wanted to be able to see the picture of where it goes at. And as you see, as we move through this, we start with baseball, and we go to softball, and lastly, it's full soccer. This will give you an idea of where we are if you look at the first page for combined projected enrollments. And we're looking at one eighty-three, because the co-op will be twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six. So the combined enrollment stays the same here, so. So moving, well, first of all, if you have any questions, please let me know on this sheet, but like I said, these are just projected numbers as we see them at this point. Moving into baseball, do you have anyone saying that?
Well, the second sheet, the one that has baseball written on it and of course on the sheet here. So the way these numbers work is they use the number actually from the third Friday count the year before. So next year's baseball season and softball season will be determined based on the twenty-three, twenty-four school year enrollment. So the number that's going to be used next year for divisional placement will be the one seventy-one. And then obviously, the next year's projected enrollment is going to be the one eighty-three for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So that would be the number that would be used next year for the twenty-five, twenty-six season. And yeah, that's just a projection.
That's in the bottom of the top graph that you, or the depiction that you have on the baseball? It's the last two lines, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six.
And that baseball co-op was started in 2016. That first year, there was a divisional three, we were in division three, but it had not been for the co-op probably that first year. The Three Lakes numbers were about seven, eight projected baseball players. I think we brought about eight or nine down that first year. We formed a great, great squad, and it's been working ever since. I mean, eighteen to nineteen point two has been loaded upon. We'll be in division four in baseball as far as I can see, so.
And right now, we've got nineteen kids out for baseball, and three of those kids are from Phelps. That's it's up to them. That's one twelfth grader, one eleventh grader, and one ninth grader, correct, Jason?
Correct. And we're starting to see, next year, we'll start to see the products of the youth programming coming through. There's, there's a number of kids, especially in the eighth grade, that'll be coming into the program next year. There's three or four eighth graders that would enter into the program next year.
So, looking at the numbers and the fact that, you know, I guess as AD here at Three Lakes, I don't see that not having Phelps is an issue with us for baseball at this point. We're going to be D four regardless. I guess I would say that there'd be no reason not to, in my opinion, for baseball. So. Any questions, please ask, but that's, I guess, the numbers are there.
It's really about giving kids an opportunity to play.
So this year, we've got three from Phelps on the baseball team.
Correct.
What did we have last year?
Four last year, I believe.
Four last year, okay. All right. And the spring, or this youth program, is this something relatively new for Phelps? Or is that something that's been ongoing for?
These, these particular boys have been in it for three, four, or five years. I'm not exactly sure. I know they started young. I know it was the development of Coach Bisnet and.
Playing here, playing here, though.
Yeah, they play on the Three Lakes side of things for the, for the youth baseball.
Okay.
So, yeah, those kids have been involved for a number of years.
I guess I got a bigger question, more directed at the board. These, these co-ops come up fairly frequently. We spend an awful lot of time on them. My question is, is are we, we have Mr. Updike here to, to handle the athletic director, athletic decisions as far as the program goes. Is there any reason we want to look at more or less giving him a larger say or the say as, as far as, as the co-ops go with approval of administration? They're the ones with the ears to the ground. They, they're hearing from parents, they're hearing from kids, they're hearing from coaches more so than we are as board members. Do we, do we hand this off a little bit?
Can I?
And take his recommendation.
Can I get into this a little bit? Haven't done this for a long, long time, in conjunction with what Josh has just said. Most school districts, when you're dealing with co-op renewals, it is fairly rubber stamp situation where, you know, unless there's some kind of a major issue that's come up or a board member has a concern, generally that paperwork does come to the board. It is on the agenda because it does have to be board-approved for WIA approval. But, you know, as far as having discussion and that kind of thing, it's up to you guys how you want that to proceed. I would definitely, if I saw issues, would bring that to you. It just would, it would definitely move things along quicker because that's a normal process for most places that I have been. Obviously, with new co-ops, new startups of co-ops, that would definitely be a more discussion item. But that's just my experience in doing it. What Josh just mentioned is fairly typical across the board, as long as there's no issues and, you know, there, you know, softball, there may be one that we want to talk about that, you know, and if it was a normal year, we may bring that up because of divisional placement. But if there's no change, I guess it just saves time for everyone. And I'm more than happy and to do that if that's what you'd like, so.
So the process doesn't really change from what I'm understanding here. It would come to the board, you make the recommendation.
Yep.
And, and we can vote on it and?
Mike, it has to be board-approved and it has to read in the minutes because that's a WIA, you know, necessity, so, for them to approve the co-op. And the same thing has to happen at Phelps.
Yeah, if it's a new co-op, our board approves it. If it's a renewal, you know, they've pretty much given me the, the ability to, is this a good thing or it's a bad thing? There's a lot less work with the renewal, and now it's even online and just submissions of signatures and we go.
I would see this very similar to like our personnel report where Phil could provide, you know, the recommendations, and then if there was ever anything that she wanted to pull out and say, we're going to approve those, but we need to talk about that, you would always have that option to do.
And I would have all the data with me at that meeting anyway. If there was questions, it's just be the process. I mean, if nobody has an issue, we could look at it along, so.
I guess my only, my only thing, if we were to move forward in this direction, would be a little bit more time because this is an April first renewal, is that right?
It's a May first.
Oh, May first, okay. So you had another.
The reason that I did that because I wasn't sure the board stood with this, you know, kind of stuff, especially softball. And I thought, well, in case we need to have another meeting, we have more time, so.
Yep, nope, and that would be the only thing that I would ask is to make sure that there's at least two meetings worth to be able to discuss if need be.
Fair enough.
But that's just my own personal opinion.
Does anybody have any further questions on this one? All right, I will look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the boys' baseball co-op with Phelps for 2024, 2025, and 2025, 2026.
Second.
All right, so motion by Alicia, second by Stacy. No further questions?
I have a couple more questions. Now, with that many kids, do we have a, an active JV program? I mean, I know we've got some games, but.
We're working on JV. Well, it's, we're going to call it varsity reserve. I've already got a game, which finds, we haven't set a date, but we already have an agreement to at least play one, if not two with them. I'd like to try to get six or seven games, varsity reserve, and it's fairly easy to do, I think, so.
Okay. With that many kids, I would, I would, if we're gonna, if we are gonna continue the co-op from the point of to get kids to play, especially with that many kids, I, my feeling is we have to have some sort of.
Our early projections were high for baseball numbers, so we did grab those games like we did last year. We had seven of them on the schedule to start last year, and they were fairly easy to, to go get, so. We have some Saturday double headers where there's JV already tied to it, so there'll be seven or eight games we can cross our fingers, mother nature helps us this year.
Any others?
And, and Phil, this, it's your recommendation to move forward with the call?
It is, yes, I see no reason, you know, it's a, it's a good situation at the moment, so.
All right, very good. I'll call the motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes five zero. All right, very good. We can now go on to consider approval of the girls' softball co-op with Phelps for 2024, 25, and 25, 26.
Jason, I'm gonna let you start on this one.
Okay. Well, the numbers don't change as far as combined enrollments or projections for the next two years or for the years after that. Softball was first voted on in 2014. At that time, there were only four divisions in softball. The fish, the fifth division wasn't put in till 2017. You know, at that time, there was some back and forth then of divisions and questioning whether we should continue the co-op or not the co-op. We had large number, Phelps' large numbers participating in the beginning. We saw a decline right around 2016, 2017 for some issues that had taken place between the two districts socially. We've recovered from that. We've tried to provide a couple of girls each year. We've been back in D five for three straight, you know, two straight years. This year, we ended up in division four by, by two students. The projection that Charlie and I brought to you guys in 2020 was one eighty-two. That number, one eighty-two, could have went either way because the divisional, the divisional line for, for this year ended up being one eighty-one, so. Next year's projection, we're down to one seventy-one, and that, that number is locked in place, so we would go back to D five. And again, in 2025, 26, we're now projected to be at one eighty-three. When Charlie and I did this two years ago, that number was projected to be one ninety-four, so we're already eleven less students than what we projected, you know, two years ago. Will that one eighty-three stay? I guess next September, third Friday count, that'll be, that'll be the number, whatever that ends up being. That could then go back and forth between D four, D five. Again, my opinion is, is D four, D five, there's just as many strong teams in division five when you run into some of the private schools as there would be in D four, so if it's about tournament play, I think we're a caliber softball team that, that could play in either division for tournament play. And again, at the end of the day, to me, it's not about the division. It's never been. It's about giving kids an opportunity to play. And we have girls that have committed into the youth league that are coming through the program in eighth grade. There's a couple in sixth grade. So we hope to continue to provide that opportunity. We hope it's with Three Lakes, but, you know, I know I talked to Jerry about it, and Phil's talked to Jerry about it quite a bit, so.
So, and Jerry, you are in favor of moving forward on this?
Yes, I, for one thing, I don't think, because which division we're in, we should ever take away from the girls that want to play the sport. It's about the. It's about, about the kids, not about what division you're in. And like Jason had said, there's some teams in our conference and in Division Four that are just as good as those Division Five teams. So if we can't win in Division Four, we're not going to win in Division Five either because the same teams are, some of those teams are just as good as those. So to me, to deprive a kid for a few games that could play an whole season isn't worth worrying about that. And we have the thing too, that like this year, I thought we'd probably have 15, 16, 17 kids out. We end up with 13. And at that point, one kid makes a big difference. When all of a sudden you get a kid that's sick, somebody flings out, now all of a sudden you're sitting there with nine or 10 kids, that's tough to manage a team to, because you're always worried somebody gets an injury or something else, you don't have anybody else. It's, 13's a good number, but I would like more kids even, you know. We have a girl that probably would have played toward ECL during basketball season, so. I think it just, for the girls' softball, I think it does nothing but benefit us. Just because you never know what's going to happen with the numbers. You think you've got a lot and all of a sudden somebody doesn't come out and you're in trouble for numbers, so.
So in talking with Jason and as I said, we brought both of the head coaches in to talk about these things, I guess I would, I would say at this point that I would propose that we move forward for the next two years in the co-op for girls' softball.
All right. So we have a recommendation. Someone prepared to make a motion.
Can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead, sure.
You said you expected more girls this year, but there's only 13. Do you think that is because the change of division?
No, it's because they went out for, they played softball in the U14 and in the, and I was, I go to their games to watch them. And I figured, oh, this girl's going to play, this girl's going to play, and some went to track, some went to soccer.
Oh, okay.
See.
Change in sports.
Yes, and they play that sport too and that's good, one is their sport. But when I'm watching them, I don't know that, even what sports they're all involved in. So I'm looking, oh, that girl's going to help us out, that girl's going to help, and all of a sudden, yeah, they're not with us, you know? So, but their wish is to play the other sport, that's what they should do.
Gotcha, thank you.
I don't think the girls even know or even care what division they're in, telling you the truth. I don't, I don't think, some of them do, some of the older girls know what division, but the younger ones, I don't, they just want to play ball.
And I don't even know if I should mention this, but, I mean, I agree that there is a nature of being able to play, but that is not the issue. Jason, I really disagreed with your comment that it's not about what level you play. There is a level of success that your kids want to have. So to say that it's just about playing is not necessarily true to that senior who's trying to do something. While I agree that whatever division we play in, we have to play in, but you can't just say, well, it's just a matter of them playing because if that was the case, then we wouldn't keep score, we wouldn't keep records. So I just wanted to put that out there.
My point there was that some of those Division Four teams are just as tough as those Division Fives.
And I absolutely, I absolutely agree with that, but the comment was a little, you know.
All right, any other questions, comments? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the girls' softball co-op with Phelps for 2024, 2025, and 2025, 2026 as presented.
I'll second it.
All right, so motion by Stacy, second by Alicia. Last call, questions, comments? Very none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None heard, motion passes five zero. And now we go to consider approval of the girls' soccer co-op with Phelps for 2024 through 25 and 25, 2025 through 2026.
Yes, sir. This is a lot easier one to look through because you look at the cutoff lines on the bottom for the future projections, it's 204 for Division Four, you know, and I think we're benefiting. We actually have, there's 14 kids on the girls' soccer team. We have currently one student from Phelps, a ninth grader, so, you know, we're getting contribution there. And, you know, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't move forward with that, you know, because with soccer numbers, you're supposed to have 11 to play. You know, we definitely needed those numbers. And I don't see any divisional issues with that at all, so I guess I don't really have a whole lot other to add. It's just to me, that's a sudden dunk, but obviously a poor decision. I want to make sure you guys have the materials, so I don't see any reason not to propose that.
All right. And coach, got coach support on that as well?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions on that consideration? I'll seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a mo... Sorry.
Go for it, Alicia.
I'll make a motion to approve the girls' softball co-op with Phelps for 2024, 2025, and 2025, 2026.
Second.
All right, so motion by Alicia, second by Stacy. Last call, any questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 None heard, motion passes five zero. There we go. All right, and thank you for cooperation between the two districts and the board working together, so. All right. And next we go to consider Three Lakes Brew River Trails snowmobile club requests to access cold storage building via the Three Lakes School parking lot.
Yes, and I think we have very patient attendees here tonight. I received this letter from Mr. Bartel and then had follow-up phone call explaining the situation and the ask. And then there's some talking points that have also been provided within your packet, so you could read through those. And then a map, they sent us a map, so you could look at the colored map labeled number two as to where the proposed drive would go through into the piece of land that would be accessed. And Mike, I would suggest that potentially we speak to our guests to give us more information on that after you get us started.
All right, very good. So we got started here, so gentlemen, do you have anything further to share with us?
As you can see in the documents, we are, we have overgrown our current storage building. And for the last several years, we've been keeping a lot of expensive equipment outdoors. Obviously it's taking a toll with the, you know, the sun and the snow and everything. And so we're looking at the possibility of building another building and there's a parcel that is landlocked between the school district property here and Peter Baltis' property on Railroad Street. And if we can acquire that property, that's where we would plan to build a building. As it's mentioned, it's basically cold storage. The activity in and out of that building would be very minimal. We would not be doing operations during the winter out of that building. That would continue to be out of the current building that we have on the other side of Railroad Street. This is, you know, there will be some vehicle going in and out primarily during the fall when we're doing trail preparation. There'd be a tractor and a gator and trailers going in and out periodically. It's not going to be on a daily basis by any means. It will be, you know, I mean, it's hard to say exactly how much, but maybe a couple, three times a week, you might be seeing activity. During the winter months, during the actual season, about the only time we'd be going in there and bringing any equipment out would be if there's a breakdown, we would keep one tractor in there, that is our recovery vehicle, and that would be going out to rescue a broken down or stuck vehicle on the trail, along with maybe a UTV. The spring would bring a little bit of activity as we're doing maintenance on the machines. After the season, we'd be ferrying back and forth to our current building, which is heated, and that's where we do the repairs and maintenance, and then they'd be put back into the shed or into the new building for the summer months. And the only time pretty much in the summer months that we would take anything out of there would be at the Fourth of July for the parade, and that again is extremely minimal. We pursue trying to go through the Baltis' property, but the problem is that they have some plans and there's no timeframe to this yet, but they have plans to develop some of their property over time. And that would be the straightest shot for us, but with the uncertainty of what they're going to do and whether that gets closed off in two, three, four years, you know, we didn't want to have to spend money on a building and then all of a sudden we have no access to it. Because on the south side of the lot, it's also Rich Jeminkowski's property and then Baltis again. And like I said, we don't know the extent of their development at this point in time, but I don't want to take the risk of investing this money and then it becomes a useless facility for us. So as I put out on the map, you know, we'd be looking at just staying as far, you know, on the perimeter of the parking lot, accessing to get to School Street, and then we come around and go back to our building that is over by the town shop.
Just for the sake of formalities, are you Tom?
I'm sorry?
Are you Tom?
I'm Tom Bartel, sorry. Yeah, I'm the president of Three Lakes Trails and Scott Swanson's the vice president.
All right. All right, Tom. So right now, this is a proposed building. It sounds like you don't even, do you have an agreement with the town of Three Lakes at this point?
Not yet, not yet. But we've talked to them and what they wanted us to do is make sure that we have this kind of access to the building before we go in further. I don't foresee any roadblocks with acquiring the property and building the building, but they wanted us to make sure that we were able to use the facility the way we want and that would require the access to it.
And the current facility you have, there's no other area?
No. We had hoped, we had talked to them probably two years ago now, we had hoped that we could have built another building just to the south of that, but they are concerned about their possible future expansion. And then they would, you know, if we built a building there, they may take up space that they would eventually need at some point down the road.
There's an awful lot of space there though. I mean, even if you built off the side of your building, your existing building, I mean, they would have to kick you out if that's the case.
No, we can't, the problem, we looked at that first. The problem is there's a septic field on one side and the well is on the other, so...
That makes sense.
That's what we originally wanted to do, but...
Sure.
That precluded us from doing that and then, like I said, we were just looking at going directly south, right along Railroad Street, kind of where the gravel piles are right now. And that got shot down. They said, we don't want to give up any more land, we don't know what we're going to need down the road. So this property we're looking at is owned by the town.
Yeah.
Okay, currently, but they're the ones who brought that to our attention and they said, see if this would work for you.
Board members' questions?
Can I ask a minute's question?
Sure.
When is it proposed that you would be building this? Do you have any kind of timeline yet?
Well, assuming we can get approval from the school board, then we would go back to the town with that in hand and work out a deal for the property. My guess is at this point, it wouldn't happen until next season or next year, like the spring, summer of next year.
Thank you.
Question, Tom. That's a pretty long strip of property. What else would be done to the property?
Basically nothing.
Okay.
It would just be that building, you know, it would take up less than a third of the available property.
So is it, is the town going to sell it to you then?
That would be my assumption, but again, we haven't gotten that far. When I brought it to the town's attention and requested to proceed with, moving forward with something with that, they said, find out what you can do to get access first. So we haven't sat down yet any discussions with regard to how the actual property ownership will transpire.
So the setback from the building from the parking lot would be roughly what?
Probably somewhere in the range of 40 to 50 feet.
Okay.
You know, we do have, if you're familiar with the groomers, you know, we have a groomer with a tractor and then the driver behind it. Those two combined are about 55 feet long, 50 to 55 feet long. So when you're maneuvering and trying to make a turn, you need a little bit of space, so we'd have the building set back further, which isn't a problem. You know, I mean, that's, the further back actually better, as far as I'm concerned. You'd have more room in the front to be able to maneuver around and that type of thing.
So you'd be using basically part of that parcel closest to the parking lot?
Correct.
And then behind that?
It would just remain trees. We would, we're pretty much just clear where we needed to construct the building and be able to allow the contractors to actually, you know, access. So you'd probably need about 10 feet on each side of the building to be able to get in there with equipment and work.
And would you be potentially purchasing that entire parcel?
That would probably be the case because...
Right.
You know, it becomes useless to anybody else.
What's that?
I was just wondering if we would want the rest.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we couldn't make a...
Make a deal?
Make a trade.
That's not on the agenda.
Open to anything.
So, future discussion though, right? I mean, if, I would think we would be interested in that, so.
Would, for the time being, if we were to grant permission, future permission, to use that route, if in the meantime, nothing happens on Mr. Baltis' property, would he allow you to take the short way out until, until something changes or?
We've tried to reach, I'll, reach out to them numerous times over eight months and there's been no response.
Okay, so this would be up from day one?
Yeah, I don't know why and not even getting a phone call back saying, hey, we're not interested, but nobody's responding.
Okay. So in terms of potential traffic during the school year, spring and fall would be, because... because the winter time you said would be?
The winter time would be fairly minimal.
Yeah.
Very minimal. Like I said, the only time we'd be taking anything out of there would be if we have a groomer that's stranded somewhere. And then that's our, we would keep our rescue tractor in there. We'd go out, bring them back, and then put it back in. But even in spring and fall, like you said, we're, that's, that's going to be where the little bit higher usage will be, but it's still not going to be excessive. The tractor and the UTV that would be stored in there are going to be out occasionally, and a lot of times that'll be on weekends. It won't be during the school week. Not to say it can't be during the school week, but a lot of times it would be on a weekend, and it would be, like I said, you know, on average, two, three times a week maybe, and it'd be in and out, one time in, one time out. That's, it would be extended in a day. So, not a lot of movement to attend to.
In order to keep access in the winter time for that path, to change our snow plowing in that corner?
And we have, you know, obviously, we have a tractor with a bucket. We can clear the snow that we need to clear to be able to get access to our building. I'm not overly concerned. We also have, you know, several members that have plows on their trucks and they can, we do that today with our current building.
Okay.
The guys come in there and clear it after a very snowfall. So, I'm not looking for anything different from the town or the school in terms of snow removal. That's something that we can handle on our own.
Liability, piece of equipment coming through, students around, covered?
I think we'd be covered if anybody's traveling through our property.
And they're insured.
And we have full insurance or, you know, liability insurance, so there's no...
Ultimately, our parking lot is open to the public. We can't prevent traffic from going through there.
Right. Does this...
The piece that would be in question, the parking lot is open to the public. The piece that would be in question would be the part that, just the small portion that runs west of the school for a very, very short distance until you get to the town property. That would be the biggest question on, on permission, because then that runs into actual private school property.
I guess my only thing is, you know, to limit as much traffic during, you know, pickup and drop-off hours and any, any major events, you know, that we might have. I mean, obviously, in the winter, there's a lot of, you know, basketball games and such that can, can bugger up the parking lot a little bit, but that's anything I'd have concerned about, I guess.
We would try and limit that. I mean, we don't want to be dealing with people running out either. I mean, that's the last thing that we want to deal with, so, I mean, unless it's an absolute emergency, we can always wait a half hour or whatever for things to clear out. I mean, we never really have to worry about it. It's never an absolute emergency that...
Unless we have somebody that's stranded out there during the winter months, and you want to get out there as quick as you can.
And that's normally going to be at night anyways.
Right. Yeah. All right. Very good. Someone prepared to make a motion?
I will. I'll make a motion to approve the request by granting permission for the Three Lakes School River Trail snowmobiling club to access proposed home storage buildings via Three Lakes School parking lot.
Second. Motion by Alicia, second by Josh. Any other questions? I'll call a motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Motion does pass, five zero. We look forward to working with you in this endeavor, and please keep us in mind, too, on our discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Very good. All right, so, okay, we're going to go winter sports, and then we'll go into Nexus?
Yes.
All right, so the winter sports report.
Yes, sir. Just like to start out, talking about the winter sports report and talking about what I got to see here in the last few weeks was, is amazing. When you see a community come together under one flag like we did with our boys program going deep into the tournament playing, the sectionals, that is, to me, what it's all about. You've got your programs all working together, the community support, our band was there playing. It all, what I call full circle is kind of what that's all about, and I'd like to see that, and I feel like it's my job to help that osmosis into each of the sports and our programs as a whole. So, I just wanted to start out by saying that was an amazing experience to see Three Lakes come together, you know, in that situation. I think that's what it's about. So, I'll start with boys basketball, just because that's kind of where we left off. Brad had said that boys basketball team had a very successful season, notably, the team won both conference championship and a regional championship. The varsity finished with a twenty and six record overall and had great wins over Anago, Northland Pines, Prentice, Florence, and Stevens Point, Bocelli. The team had eight seniors this year, which will leave an incredible gap next year. The senior class was strong with character, work ethic, and leadership, and it showed on the floor. The team played each, played for each other and helped each other achieve a deep playoff run, losing out to Elm and Bancroft in the sectional semifinals. The team had notable individual achievements as well, with four boys achieving academic all-state, Jared, whoa, can't read names. And we had also two first-team all-conference folks, and one of them was a unanimous choice. We had a second-team all-conference and an honorable mention all-conference. That's quite a, quite a lot for one basketball team to have that many people in an all-conference roster. And Mr. Boltman was chosen as coach of the year in Northern Lakes Conference. JV also had a winning season. They were twelve and ten, with only two returning players from last year. They had some struggles early, but improved greatly as the season went on. For example, they lost to Phelps, a team made up of a lot of juniors and seniors early in the season, and turned around and beat Phelps near the end of the season. The team showed steady improvement as they, as the year went on. Several players had not played before and hadn't played in several years, so it was good to see them improve at a rate that they did, boys basketball. Moving to girls basketball. Coach Javonkowski wanted to take a moment to talk and summarize the twenty-three, twenty-four basketball season. He says, "As you are aware, it was a tumultuous beginning with many players on the verge of quitting." He said he was asked over Christmas, an honor, to accept the challenge of taking on interim head basketball coach. Since he had coached all the players in the junior high program and watched them over the last few years, there was some familiarity. Certainly, the learning curve was enormous. He had to first understand the defense, offensive schemes of who was playing in what positions, and determine starting players and substitutes. Creating a positive environment on and off the court was my first order of business. Confidence was low, skill development needed to be implemented, and impressed the players for the accountability as individuals and as a team. Overall, under my tenure, the team finished with an eight and ten record. Many of the players realized a few less, realize with a few less turnovers, a couple of made free throws, we could easily have been ten and eight or eleven and seven. There were a few highlights, our exceptional game against Rhinelander with only six players playing extremely well for three fourths of that game, only to fatigue and eventually lose. However, that game helped the players realize, by executing the game plan and playing near-air free basketball, that they can compete against any opponent. And at Rib Lake Regional Game, and at the Rib Lake Regional Game, taking the early lead, losing the lead, and coming back strong to win. Both games were building blocks for the future as I see it. I conducted X interviews with primary, the primary question of, "What are your expectations for next year?" The responses ranged from being a starter, to improve and play varsity, or to do whatever to help the team. Not only are they excited about next season, but most are also willing to participate in summer programs. With a strong nucleus of next-year juniors and a talented freshman group, we will have an experience in depth to be competitive. Finally, I thank Jenna and, excuse me, thank two seniors for their contributions for this season and the program over the last four years. Thank you for the opportunity, Rich Javonkowski.
Very good.
Wrestling, a little shorter. We had, as a whole, our co-op won ten of fourteen duels, including a win over top-ranked Iron Mountain, who was eventually a state team qualifier in Michigan. We had two, two placer finishers in the Oshkosh Holiday Tournament, which is the hardest high school tournaments in Wisconsin. Coach Schubert and I kept every student that came out. There were two first, first-round all-conference selections, Regan, oh, God, again. Two state qualifiers and one placer, fourth place at one oh six, and another placed at weight of one thirty-two. The coaches were selected as coaches of the year, and they finished second in the conference, hoping to go forward in the future. Seth Center. I did not hear from the hockey coach at Rhinelander yet, but if I get that, I will let you know, because we had one student who played on that team as well. So, once again, it was fabulous. It was a great, great experience as we finished up the year. Excited.
I would say, just to clarify, when we have a situation where they're all-conference or things, that's public knowledge.
Fair enough.
That's very different than a student who might be going out, so let's name.
Yep.
So, that's where I think we have to be careful.
Absolutely. I just...
Lot to celebrate in what you just shared with us.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations to all the student athletes and coaches and all those involved, volunteers. Yeah.
It's really neat to see.
Good stuff. All right, any questions, anyone? We will move on. And next, we're going to go to the Nexus facilities study update.
Okay. And I had put some notes in here. I just want to start this off with the sharing with you. I didn't on purpose give you information in advance because it was very much, it's subjective. It's what I took from all the notes I gathered. It's from the meetings that we've had. I tried to capture your voices, and then I also went ahead and spoke again with our administrator. So, I just wanted to share that with you, and now I put it in board docs, so Alicia, you should be able to see what I have for my report. I did a formal report. I know it's fourteen pages long, so that's very scary. And then on top of that, I have what I'm calling a facilities assessment priority list, and this is based on talking with the principals and maintenance, Jack and Dave, as far as what I see preliminarily has risen to the top for concerns. When I was very gung-ho and I said, "Yes, I will have this for you at the next meeting with facts and figures and everything else," it's a lot more to it than that. So, I think we're in a really good, solid place. I think it's been whittled down to where I feel comfortable sharing with you what I have put together based on the other information that we have. And then, again, we keep saying it's a process. We talk about what the costs would be, and I'll get into that in a moment. So, that's my long-winded kind of preface to starting. Any questions before we get going? Okay?
Let's dig in.
Okay. Well, I did make hard copies for you. If you'd rather have that, or if you want to just look on your board docs, that's fine, too. Do you have a preference? Because if you don't, then I'm probably going to share it with some of the people in the audience.
You know, I'll take a copy.
Okay.
And take some notes on that, too.
Full disclosure, principals and such haven't seen this, so they might be surprised.
Anyone else? Good?
I'll just go.
I think the principals would be most important. So, let's look at the administrative summary to start off, okay? And I just tried to capture some kind of a synopsis of what has transpired since we started this, this program here, this investigation, if you will, into what our situation is with our facilities and our buildings. And so, I outlined here that it was really between February and November of 2023 is when Nexus did their on-site study and review of what the conditions were of our buildings and our grounds, and outlined that they looked at all, everything that we had from top to bottom, which you've heard this before. And then, they provided for us a really very large report that had many more things than you saw, that we eliminated right away some of the things that we knew were actually done by us or in our plans, so you didn't see that. Then, we went ahead and got together again, and administrators gave their feedback, custodian or maintenance gave their feedback, and then at the February seventh board meeting, we came to some agreements, and I thought it would be important to outline that. So, if you take a quick look at the February seventh board special meeting, I thought we were really productive with that, because as a board, you decided that it was not under your desire to go to a subcommittee, but instead meet as a group. And as a full board, we agreed that that was your preference. We also agreed that the review of the assessment should be through the perspective of a needs versus a wants-based analysis, and I think we've kept that very much at heart. In the next part, we said that we wanted to review each section of the proposal, providing additional feedback, and that is what we did. Then, we looked at the three specific locations, and trying to summarize it up, I thought we were thinking about maintenance, which is both deferred and larger-scale projects. And then, the safety and security of our buildings really, again, rose to the top. And then, our learning spaces, well, I should say our spaces. It included our learning spaces, our community spaces, outdoor facilities, et cetera. And we agreed that a survey was not yet appropriate. If you recall, we were being encouraged by Nexus to already have a survey, and we really felt, especially I really felt, that we had to have more clear direction before we went there. So, that is a real quick summary, because you have it in black and white. If you're comfortable, I'll go forward.
Yes.
Hitting with Sugar Camp, because we do not have to go line by line, but I just want you to have a good feel. Sugar Camp, I said, they shared with us, "The building is in excellent condition. It has been very well maintained." I think that Todd, Jack, and myself have had a really good relationship and system each year, sitting down, talking about what priorities need to be done, what we would like to do, and then the what-if-we-get-tos. You know, now, that's not considering all the district projects that are intertwined in that as well, such as major cabling and such that happened this past year. So, really done a nice job. I outlined a few of the highlights. I'm sure I missed some that have happened between 2019 and current, and that includes the new flooring in the main hallways of the building, the painting and accenting of the interior hallways, which really changed the whole feel of the building, the completion of the LED lighting, the new 4K kindergarten locker cubbies, the upgraded toilets and hands-free faucets, the new bathroom partitions in the one-six wing. Way back when COVID first was upon us, the updated filtration of air, air filtration and systems. If you recall, that was quite a project. We made sure everything was above board for both buildings, and then many other routine maintenance projects. Can't forget the windows. Many windows were replaced, and that's reflected further in the report. I'm just very pleased with where Sugar Camp building currently is, both indoors and out. I think that when we look at Sugar Camp, we're talking much more about the lack of space, what we can do within a limited footprint of the building. So, I just set that for you. Questions before we move on?
Or...
What?
Limited by the current footprint or potential addition?
Or, yeah. Correct. So, looking at the mechanical systems, I really just briefly summed it up for you, because you had asked me to find out, kind of label, what's a priority, what's a hold, what is not in the plan. So, that's what I did. I went through each of the... So that's what I did. I went through each of those after talking to Jack and Todd and reviewing our notes, our board meeting. I did re-watch our board meeting. That's really helpful for me when I can, you know, get a good feel because sometimes three weeks, things aren't quite as fresh. But we determined that in the mechanical systems that our boilers were functioning well. It wasn't a priority to consider replacement at this time. Our air conditioning and our comfort was, as you recall, except for probably less than 5% of the time, it was adequate. It's doing well. Now, of course, if you looked at an addition, then you would have to consider upgrades. But at this point in time, it's not a priority. Sprinklers would not be added unless you were doing a construction add, and that would be planned within that project. So that's not listed as a priority at this time. The HVAC retro-commissioning, that's just basically the fittings and trying to connect when you add new to all. So that's kind of a standard upgrade. So in a real brief recap, that is mechanical. Any questions, or shall I keep on plowing?
Keep going.
Okay. Our electrical, again, I did the same thing. I looked at each of those areas, the electrical service. That would be considered an upgrade if there was additional, as Jack explained to us previously. We're right at the verge. We're capable, and we're sufficiently meeting our needs now. But if there was an additional space building on, then we would have, that would all be part of this. Then, then we would have to consider it. So that would be in the future. The emergency generator, this is a priority. We've talked about that many times. I have asked for information in quotes. I do think that regardless of what happens in the future, we know that Sugar Camp needs that. It is something that not only affects our freezers, it affects our water, our well, and our toilets in Sugar Camp. And as we mentioned before, it can be one time in a winter. It might be no times, or it can be three or four. It depends on the season we're having. Going forward, looking at the additional outlets, it's not a priority. That is a general maintenance type of thing. If there's a need, we could address it. The card access system, although this is listed under Sugar Camp, you're going to hear it again for Three Lakes and for the district concern. The current access in Sugar Camp works. There's the buzzing system. There's the key card, you know, for the people to get in. That is working fine. But we talked about our concern if there would be a lockdown situation. We can't just automatically override the system, you know, during those lock times. Steve talked quite a bit about that at length, and that is a concern that I put under district needs. It's a more expensive cost, but I do think it's a priority. And we're talking about tying our camera systems, again, into our door system. So that's something I think rises, again, to the top. I said it the third time, but it really is something that's been on our mind and something that I think we should be investigating more with costs and a plan to get that installed. Questions or thoughts on those?
About here.
Looking at the building envelope, concrete masonry, repointing, sealant repair, that is part of our regular routine if a maintenance plan. If there would be something bigger scale, for instance, if we were looking at doing the re-tucking or repointing of, like, the whole district, then it would be something that you would potentially want to look at a, I'm going to call them contractors because I don't know the lingo very well for, for what's out there in the construction world. But that, then you would look at for cost-effectiveness, a project of that nature. At this point, Jack is confident that what we're doing is working, and we are covering the most immediate needs that way. As I mentioned, the windows have all been replaced except in the office and the principal's office. That is not as, I would say, urgent. It's something I would not recommend replacing those windows at this time if we are going to potentially be remodeling that entranceway. Why spend that money? They're functional, and there's not kids running back and forth by the playground like the other area of concern. Our exterior door repairs, that's continued within our summer maintenance project. Moving into site and civil, the playground and tripping hazard repair, we've known where this is. That's in our current maintenance plan. I think that's something that we can look at more closely and determine, Jack, if we have to act immediately on it or where we're at. Looking at the second part there, oh, there's the sidewalk. Again, it's known. It's in the maintenance plan where there is a low area. The drainage, did I miss one? Oh, I missed number two. The playground asphalt regrading and the grade away from the building. Some of this work has been done, but as we've mentioned, if there's going to be a change in the layout, you don't want to do a lot of earth moving and then have it not really be effective because that is not what the ultimate goal was to be. So it's in our plan. We're aware of it. Grading was done with the new playground equipment and such that came in. So I want you to know that it has been addressed, but it would be looked at more closely according to where we fall on the larger project planning. Our parking lot drainage, it has not been an issue to this point. It's not a priority at this time. As the report from Nexus indicated, they would recommend that the second choice would be to have the new French drain and pipe to the northwest. But again, it's working, it's functioning. We didn't feel that it was a high priority need. Am I going way too fast for you?
No.
Okay.
Good.
All right. We're getting there. The interior finishes, again, the high-priority ceilings. This, I think we all agree, the ceilings in Sugar Camp are a priority. They are like the last piece of what needs to be redone to really pull that building together, and it does complete the aesthetics of the building, the project. So whether it's a bigger project, I do think it's something that we can work on within our maintenance plan. But that's like any project. You've got to plan it out. You've got to have the manpower and the resources there. So I can speak more with Jack and Todd about that. I don't have a timeline attached to this one because it's one we're aware on, and we can bring that back to you. Let's see here. Paneling in the kindergarten room, disregard that. We don't see that as a high priority or a priority at all. The continued classroom doors, that's been our regular maintenance plan with, you know, last year, a lot of the painting was finished. This year, the plan is to move into some of the doors and some of the trim work to get that, again, updated and refreshed. The case work is in good shape. What we do have to do is within the regular plan. Sometimes things might not be modern, but they are functional and they look good, and that doesn't rise to a priority. And then getting into the final, this is probably where we get a little more deep into it, the educational adequacy pieces. Looking at the secure entry and the office waiting remodel, it's a concern for safe and security. There is visibility the way it's currently set up, but again, if you buzz somebody in, they have immediate access into the building. It's not being filtered through the office. And these next points, I will, I will take ownership and say they are really my vision based on what other people have said. So if there's a, you know, questions or, you know, some concerns, let's talk about it. But I do think that's a priority. I think that this is, through this process, it has risen to the top that it's important to us to make sure that all of our buildings, all of our entries feel secure and safe, and we have control over what's the coming and the going within our building. Moving then to the special education suite and remodel. We talked a lot about how we've been making do, and yes, we've been making do. But again, I really feel this is something that is, and I didn't put a recommendation there. I think that is high priority. That doesn't necessarily result in a need for construction, but we know with partitions and with the space that we have, especially the lack of privacy that we're seeing for some of the therapies and such, we shouldn't have our students, what we said was public display, you know? I don't feel comfortable about knowing that special education has to necessarily move into the library because the counselor is meeting with another. So I think in the Sugar Camp plan, that rises, again, something that we want to make sure we're having equitable experiences for all of our kids, regardless of the location. Looking at the STEM and conference room updates, think that's kind of a hold right now. Todd has some other ideas about access to water and what we might want to do. That would be one of those nice to-dos if we did a bigger construction project. Maybe we could look at that. But right now, I think we could figure out how we want to manage that space and how we want it to be used. Or if there is a few minor changes that could be determined in-house. Looking at the kindergarten and 4K remodel, Jack and Todd, please share if you disagree or agree. Jack feels that this could be done in-house, you know, maintenance. And when I say in-house, with the help of other people in the neighborhood. It's not that Jack is going to just do this all on his own. We see that as a priority. I see it as a priority for the needs of the students, for the supervision, and again, for the learning that's taking place with a lot of our little guys. I shouldn't say a lot. It's more common to have kids coming in now who need additional help with some of the toileting and everyday routines. And so that requires an adult to have eyes on, as well as you have to have kids monitored and supervised as well in the other classrooms. So leaving the classroom is not really feasible. Now we're getting into some of the larger discussions that I think we, we should consider. The addition of the 4K classroom toilets, addition of storage. This, again, was discussed, if you recall, my concern when we were moving to full-day 4K, and that class came in with 20 students, and we still have 20 students in that class. So we have those ups and downs, but that was a big group. And, you know, we've, we've made it work. Things, things are working well. But again, I'm saying we've made it work. I, I do see Sugar Camp continuing to grow. It's just in the right location. We have a lot of interest from neighboring families that it's just in their flow of where they're going to work and stuff. It's true for Three Lakes, too, but maybe a little more so for Sugar Camp in the last couple of years. So I put that out there because right now, we're making it work. We are very short on space. I think we absolutely all agree, we could use additional community space as well as special education space. Or this, if we built, if we build it, they will come. If we build it and we're not using the 4K with the upgraded bathroom remodel I just talked about, that space is still going to be used, whether it's for a special education setting, or would it be another educational setting? We will use the space. It absolutely will be used. So I think it's important that we start considering, like we did back, you know, three years ago, if we could move out and have an additional, additional classroom or two with bathrooms, it makes sense. It just really helps serve what we need. That was a mouthful. You got any questions on the thinking there? Or agreements, disagreements? Again, now, I'm giving you what has shown to be needs or possible considerations. Of course, a lot more would be done, and then the community survey and all that comes after, but trying to get some parameters around what looks most reasonable. All right, well, in that same vein, then I'm going to move to the cafeteria multipurpose room addition. I put that in here also as if larger changes are determined necessary include in the remodel addition plan. We hadn't talked about the kitchen until this last meeting. And it was, it is clear that, we all know that, it's very tight in that Sugar Camp kitchen. And Sugar Camp gym is being used for the cafeteria space, which is different than the Three Lakes setup here. I think if we thought about an expansion that had that kitchen renovation attached to a space for serving lunches and breakfast and potential meeting space, community space, that would all be a benefit. Again, it's not like we have anywhere else to go. It's something that we really would be warranted to look more deeply at since we're doing the deep dive that we are. Any thoughts from you?
Definitely.
Tell them right now.
Okay.
I think you started off, I mean, that's pretty much completes the Sugar Camp.
Yep. Except for, you know, the good, better, best wow factors.
Yeah, I mean, starting off with, in my opinion, is a high need for additional space for special ed. We've all been there. We've toured that, and you could, you could remodel that. You could change walls and that, but you're still working with X amount of square footage. And I think that, to me, is, is a high need because I don't see those needs going away. And then the cafeteria kitchen, I think, definitely needs attention. There again, this is another thing that I see in a category we may do. You know, we're making it work, but how long do you do that kind of a thing? That kitchen is not efficient the way it's set up. Gets the job done, I get it, but it does need attention. And I think the gymnasium, I think there should be something looked at there. I guess, in terms of the community wanting to use that gym, I mean, what's?
It's amazing how much it actually does get used.
So, I mean, if you, if you had additional room, would it be used?
I believe it would be.
You believe?
Well, say an extra gym, or what are you saying?
I'm just, you know, if you were making it, make it smarter, or not smarter, making it larger.
It would get used.
Okay, to what extent? Right now, I mean, we have a couple of coaches in here for youth teams, and they know how much it can use. Bill can tell you through gym usage forms, the demand over there.
Just, just the high school use. I mean, availability, I mean, to be able to take a team, you know, a program from here and utilize space over there. I mean, junior high is doing it now, but it would just expand that opportunity a little bit more for, not only for the grade school and the community, but as well as the high school.
Especially this time of year, because if you look at, right now, we're dividing every little, looking crane up. We even got golf team in the auditorium for crying out loud. So, yeah, we definitely could use space on whichever end somewhere.
Well, I know even the Piad classes, like yesterday, they're doing volleyball in Piad. We took down the Piad, the volleyball nets, so that, at least the net part, so that, I think, third and fourth grade girls softball were practicing in their last day. Then this morning, right away, Charlie and I throw up the nets, so then you can have the net again for the next, his next session. I'm always surprised because if I see a vehicle in the parking lot, first thing I'm always doing is just looking at the camera real quick, seeing who's in the building, and that gym is, most lights are on a lot.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah, yeah. It's the community's.
Right, exactly.
It's an awesome thing. It definitely gets used.
So what are our thoughts here? I mean, in terms of gathering our input here and moving forward with, I guess, then presenting this to the community for their input. What are your thoughts on that, Terry?
My thoughts, and I'll go to that now. I was going to sum that up at the end.
Before we go on to Three Lakes.
Yeah, let's talk about that now. I think what we do is we would circle back with our Nexus. I think what we do is, we would circle back with our Nexus administratively. We would talk to them and say, this is where we've come with our meetings, and this is now where we are at. This is where we have found interest and get their take on what the timing is for the survey. They had shared with me, Rob Brown had shared with me, generally you don't survey. If we were looking to do a capital project in April of next year, you wouldn't do that survey until January. My point is, we would want to know now, I think, in multiple surveys, what is the interest first, before we go into a lot of investigation? See if there's an interest, not even saying that this is what we're going to do. People are going to ask, the same, we need to know what your feel of support is or not support. Would you like to see this considered? So I would go ahead and propose that we would meet with Nexus with that, and then be working with what we would want those questions to look like. And I would feel very much that I want Jen to be part of that, along with school perceptions would be doing that part of it with us.
Okay, great.
And I would say that would be probably something we would gather in the summertime, because that would give us, you know, if we were doing this June or July, we would get a good feel for what people, they're going to be talking. They know we've been having these meetings. They know that there's been the facilities assessment done. And they would be able to say, yep, I really could get on board with that, or no, that's not where we want to see it going. And we would hear from different groups of people. You know, you've mentioned how some of you are more with the athletics group. Maybe some of you are with the little old ladies knitting and stuff. I mean, we want to hear from all of our people, how they could be used. I can tell you, our pickleballers would be probably all over the need for more space. So I think it would have a very large community appeal to be asked, and we would get some really good, solid feedback. So that's my thought in going forward with this.
Okay, all right. So at this point here, you're just looking to get some board, I guess, comments, et cetera, as we go through this?
Well, yes.
And so...
Your directive to me was to bring back priority, which I believe I have captured that here for you. And then if you feel there's something that is missing, or something that you would like further, to be further looked at, then I would do so. But I'm going to bring it back to administration and Nexus and, you know, kind of formulate what that would look like. Like specifically what our special education spaces would look like. What that kitchen and a multipurpose room, a cafeteria, would look like. Get some more specifics from them.
All right. Are there comments, board members? Anybody have anything particular with the Sugar Camp?
So are we leaning towards in addition? Is that what we're wanting?
Just getting some input from you at this point. Just, I mean, your thoughts of what Terry has gone through here?
If, this is what it comes down to. If you said, we are not interested in more space, we are not looking at a build, we're not looking at construction, whether it be for the entryway or whatever, then I would want you to tell me that, because there's a lot of time and energy going in by Nexus, primarily, you know, doing that. That doesn't mean it'll ultimately be where we end up or where we go, but I really want us to be informed. And I will do whatever you guys ask me to do.
I feel like it's in the right direction, for sure, with everything that we were looking at. It's just a matter of narrowing down, I mean, the needs are, you hit the head on the knee with the high priorities, and then it's just a matter of trying to, like you say, put them together on what options we really have.
Okay, good. All right, well, then, looking at Three Lakes, I kind of outlined the same thing. You've got it in black and white. So I captured the condition of the building, and in Three Lakes, it's a little bit of a different situation. It really depends on the age of the part of the building we're talking about. We've talked frequently about the 1956 area, and that's probably the most updated need of anywhere in the district. Things that have been accomplished, again, here are the upgrading in the LED lighting. The gyms were painted. The wiring, cabling upgrades were done, and that was a tremendous job well done by our maintenance staff. The air filter, I'm sorry, Alicia? Alicia, did you have a question?
I do not.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead. I'll go ahead then. And then, looking at, remember, we did the flooring, which really turned out nicely in the commons area and such. And just wanted to make sure we give recognition to that work that's already been done. And looking at where we have to go forward. So then, looking at the mechanical, we talked a lot about the boiler system. That I'm still waiting for. Final quotes, they were here, they did an assessment. There's a discussion about moving to three cast iron boiler units. But again, this can be done in phases, and we need to determine if where we are at is repairable, or if we need to go to a new system. And I did not get that complete information yet. Like I said, they were here, they have to write it up, and that was the discussion. Air conditioning, again, not priority at this time. I'm just going to go through some of these kind of quickly. Stop me if there's one you really want to discuss. Same with the air handling units, consider the deferred maintenance at this time. The air handling, it's hold, it's currently running well. It is an older system, but it's working well, and according to what Dave has shared with me, has not changed a whole lot. Looking at the 56 wing, it's deferred maintenance. We repair as we need to with the heating system and such. If we were going to do a major construction, that would be an overhaul, where you would put the heating either above or below, it'd probably be above ground. That would be a very major plan, a major overhaul. Right now, we're saying probably not necessary. We're not looking to do additional construction. Looking at the woods collector, that is deferred in regular maintenance. That was just replaced about two months ago, as far as the motor goes. I've asked Dave to get going with the sink and lavatory faucets. The products are here, they're already being installed, so that's being done, a little bit every day. The piping, we've known about that. We haven't had any leaks this year, knock on wood, as they say. But we do have the tools, and we've been repairing as we need to. It is deferred maintenance. Looking at adding fire protection, not in the plan right now unless there would be a construction. Electrical systems, the breaker system is currently adequate. It's working well for our needs. Talking about generators here too, it's in our current maintenance plan, but in the discussion with Dave, he really felt that he would like to see what it would be to prioritize having the entire building under a generator. So we're going to talk a little bit more about that. Right now, our main goal is to make sure our coolers stay cool, and our IT room does not overheat. So that's there, but I think there should be some more investigation into that. Deferred maintenance for the outlets, or if there was a teacher need or specific room or class need, we would address that. Here comes the card system again. Same, we really feel that this should be considered more in the immediate plan. It's health, it's safety and security. The cameras, adding six additional cameras. I call it high priority because it finishes the project. We know where we need them. We already have the relationship with palleting going, and I foresee getting that finished this summer. The fire alarm system here, I believe, is a priority, because it is very difficult to set and reset that alarm panel. And as we've talked about, it doesn't call out to anywhere. It's just in-house, local. And we would want to have contact with our emergency responders, should there be any kind of a situation where we have the need for emergency services. And the electrical system, this is going to come back twice, the sound system in the big gym. We know that we really need to move to the wireless technology, so there needs to be instruction within our staff and such to do that. And those, the directional mics, they have to be ordered and ready to go before graduation starts or comes upon us, which is very close. Are they here? For both the auditorium and the gym?
For the gym.
I know they're in the auditorium.
The gym too, yes.
Wonderful. That's great news.
Yeah, they work super in auditoriums.
Oh, I thought we only, okay.
Really good.
I knew the auditorium was set. I've seen those. Okay. And let's see here. Yeah, the auditorium, we talked about that. That's going to be a bigger project. If we talk about floor replacement and the lighting and sound overhead work, we wouldn't want to replace the flooring until we would take care of the other things. Dave feels that the flooring could be done by maintenance staff, but it depends how big of a job that really has to be. They've replaced like 13 panels or so, but in a full overhaul, that would be something we consider down in the district needs or considerations. And then we heard that the sound system in the stadium is hard to hear, especially during some of the track events. I think we would need more evaluation on that. That wasn't really studied. Building envelope, we talked about most of this already. The skylight is not leaking, so right now, it's on a hold. We wouldn't take it apart while it's working. Same thing with the masonry repointing that I talked about. Potential for us to do it, but if it's a bigger project, then we would look at that being a hired-out task. The replacement of windows in Three Lakes would be a much bigger job. There are three that are in very poor condition. That could be a deferred maintenance in the routine, but it takes quite some time to order them, and then the installation is a bit of a process. So I think that is something that we should be looking at getting done. I don't think that's as time-sensitive as some of the other issues might be. And then we discussed replacing the door 12. And there's already been contact made on that with the company. Sight and Civil, the sinkhole repair. Dave said he really feels that he needs to, he and his crew, or he and whoever are going to help him, need to look at that this summer. He thinks it's a matter of getting equipment to open it up and see what's there, and then potentially determining what it is that it's going to be the repairant. The stormwater at door 17 and 18. Again, it looks like we probably will have to have some grading and some outside help to get that addressed. Talking about sidewalk repairs, I don't feel that sidewalk repairs are something that our staff has the, I won't say capability, but the time and the manpower and really the equipment, that's something that, let's look at a project, if we're doing sidewalk replacements, when we're doing the R1, we should look at the other sidewalks that need it at the same time. Make it one inclusive project. We talked about the parking lot in front of the elementary, the drive-through, you know, the circle area there and where there was additional parking. The inlet looks like a sidewalk. It's not as for water removal as we talked about. Really don't think there's a better option. It's working. When we talk about one-year, five-year, 10-year, Steve and I both felt originally that this could be further out. And I think it is. It's functioning. It's a little tight at a couple of times during the day. Maybe morning and in afternoon during pickup, but it's not like it's not being dealt with. It flows very smoothly when people understand it. And I would really not want to give up additional green space for parking, because it is working. They're not parking down to the Black Forest. It's just along the side of the school, so we're okay with that. And then the interior finishes. Again, I'm saying the 1956 corridor area. Dave felt that that ceiling project could be done in-house. He said that's the kind of project that, when they can plan for it and they have the materials here, he actually said it was fun. I don't know if I would use that word. He said, you see accomplishment, you get it going, you can improve your lighting at the same time, which they've gotten very comfortable with that. So he was encouraged and felt that that was something that they could take on. The flooring, we had a lot of discussion about that, and I bring it to you for a little more thought. We definitely want to work on the terrazzo flooring. The terrazzo is excellent. That will last forever. It does need to be stripped, grinded and buffed, you know, that it's time-intensive, but once it's done, again, it's going to last for many, many years. It might be a matter of getting the equipment in. And then Dave has been checking out, he's very interested in, when we do some of the tile removal, considering some of that polished concrete approach. The only thing I can compare it to is I've seen it in Walmart, I think is where I've seen it. And he said, you know, depending on the aggregate, it can be really beautiful, and it's durable. And you think about like your science labs and stuff. So instead of taking out old tile and putting down additional tile or maybe even vinyl, we really think that's something that we should take a deeper look at. And that's new for you. The painting remains within our maintenance schedule. All of the white was done five to six years ago. Moving to branded colors, accent colors and stuff, of course, to me, is important. That comes more into the district piece of it, and should be considered.
Definitely.
Yes. Oh, good. So you'll see that again. And then repainting the entire building, you know, like from top to bottom, don't see that as a high priority at this time, because that came with a very, almost million-dollar price tag. I believe it was $900,000. I think we can figure that out a little bit better. And still get our color and our highlights and things with good planning and some deeper thinking about it. Going into the re-coat of the ceramic tile, talking about in the entryway and into the high school, that's that peach tile we've mentioned. I do think we should consider that as the coating. That will give us our Blue J Blue brand, if that's the color ultimately we go with. And it's durable. We're not, you know, compromising the integrity of the structure. It's solid. The tile's not removed. It's just covered. Very durable. It would bring us into the current times. So I'm taking it upon myself to list that as a priority. Maybe I should, but I did. The door hardware, we've been re-keen cylinders as necessary. It's in our maintenance plan. I think we'll continue with that plan. At this point, again, our outside door access is much more of a concern when we're talking about keening an entry than it is internally. The locker room, or the case work and shelving, not a priority. And then the locker room, lockers, I should say. What they had showed in the pictures were actually elementary lockers. And those are in the routine maintenance every year. If we found that there was an area that needed to be replaced or potentially repainted, we would look at that first within maintenance and then go from there if we need to make more decisions. But right now, we feel that the lockers are, for the most part, very functional, and they clean up and repaint, and it, they do well. They're doing well. We're back again to the upgrades in the auditorium. That includes the LED lighting and the new stage flooring. That would be a priority to consider. I list that as a district need, because that is a very heavily-used facility, the auditorium. And as we talked about, there are several times now that there are things we can't do or we have to turn away requests because we're not capable with our technology to accommodate those requests. Anything on those before I go into the adequacy?
Should start a home maintenance class. Kids can do this.
That's a great idea. We can get them on it.
No, I'm sorry, utilizing them for this.
All right, and then, talking about our elementary office remodeling and secure entry. Again, I think Steve made it, brought it to your attention that he didn't ask for an elementary remodel, but it was a great use of the space, the way it was presented to us. It gave us the security and the access and use space that we do have available. Steve had listed it as his, I'm calling it remodeling priority number one, and I agree with that. So I would see that's our number one for the elementary area. Looking at the elementary staff and toilet room remodel with the small group. Originally, we talked about this as a need because it's not in a good line of visibility. The third, fourth, fifth, sixth is separated from the other bathrooms, or they have to go down the hall. It wasn't something we said, yeah, we really should do, but then in further discussion and thinking about it, taking it apart from, if you can, three things you could do in the elementary, I landed on, I think it's important, just for the visibility and supervision standpoint, and it would make sense doing it. standpoint, and it would make sense doing it. Steve, you came to that as well, correct?
Yeah. It's around, it's down the hall and down another hall, and they're pretty small for, when you're taking three, three or four classes to lunch through there, you go two or three at a time in those bathrooms is, it's problematic. The most, the most issues we've had with non-supervised things happening have happened in that area. So it's, again, it's a safety and supervision issue along with space and convenience, I guess.
Yeah.
So we include that. Let's see here, the STEM lab at our sinks, not a priority at this time. The junior high toilet room remodels, that is a priority. We know that there is a need there. Junior high principal remodeling, priority number two, as we talked about before, getting that up to date. And again, remembering the ADA compliance factors, too. It's a long haul in this building to get to an ADA-compliant bathroom, depending where you are. Our junior, senior high school science room and art room updates, it wasn't considered a priority at this time, but I always circle back to with the sciences especially, it might be worth another look to see, not necessarily a big building project or big remodel, but are there needs that we can talk to the instructors that they could give us some more insight? And we should probably talk a little bit more about that. Looking then at the junior high, senior high special education suite, the large group instruction or multipurpose and flex athletics, this came out as priority number one, being driven by many of these points, but especially with the special education suite, as it's called, bringing that more centrally located, giving more space. It's a very small space. We would like to get that back, you know, more into the central part of the building. Our kids are very much, all our kids, and they're flowing in and out as a natural part of the day. Justin's able to reclaim a classroom for his other needs by going forward with that. So that is listed as the first priority. Then looking at the high school main office remodeling and entry lobby update branding, this comes in as priority number three. The more I think about it, the more I think that these priorities don't have to be one, two, and three, but they are priorities. My main concern for the high school office is really, again, the privacy factor. We have kids that are with adults, and they might not be there for behavior. It might be for counseling, and they're all grouped together. It's just not conducive. And I have to say, if I want to have a private conversation with our principal, he needs to come to my office because you can hear any reading through the walls. I can hear what's going on anywhere.
I can hear Ryan Fox's conversation in the phone.
So I think that's a very important consideration in this. And let's see here, the, looking at the district secure entry concessions, I'm putting this as further discussion required. Caleb and I both are not in favor of the plan that was presented the way it was laid out. I think there's a lot more potential that would be looked at. I have talked with Dave personally about what we can do just with this space here, in-house possibly as a summer project, and some more to come on that. But I do want to look at it a little bit more deeply, but not be committed to what was shared with us. The junior high updates with the shower rooms, et cetera, the junior high gym, et cetera, it was, one of those would be nice, but it's not listed as a priority at this time. And then going into the community fitness center and the high school entrance with the canopy, I am saying that I think the canopy and the expansion of the commons area, that is a priority. I think that's very warranted with the need of space, with the need of, you know, security. Our kids are there, they're there quarter after seven in the morning, they're there, you know, in the afternoon, and people come and go. And when you walk into your high school area especially, it should be the feel of the characteristics and the culture, and that's what greets you. And we want to really make sure that that's saying who we are. And then looking at the construction of the assembly labs, I think, again, repurposing of current spaces in that area can be done without having to go to a build. Those are extremely expensive, and I don't think that we are at the point that we're saying, hey, we've outgrown the space we have. I think we have to utilize what space we have better in that, in that area in particular. The elementary parking lot revisions, I mentioned that already. And then we get into the stadium upgrades. The first one is a track replacement, the goalposts, the irrigation, you know, I've outlined what you've shared with me, and then I've shared a little bit more. Again, this is really getting into what is the community input, what is our input from where we're at. We have had, we've known that the track has needed to be replaced for, well, five years that I've been here, it's been talked about, so we know that that's been identified. We know the fields are identified. Regardless of what way we go with that, they have to be in pristine condition day one. I mean, Dave and I have had more hours than you probably would care to believe, but that will be up to snuff. There's just no wiggle room here. It needs to be up to stuff for the immediate. What we figure out in the long run, I think, is a conversation worth having. And I'd also say, before we get to the point of, we're talking very general right now, but when you look at the cost of irrigation systems, upkeep, lining, paint, manpower, maintenance, you know, and then you look at the turf, artificial turf. I am not an expert in that. I'm not going to pretend to be, but I did put on the sheet that you have in the second summary here, the difference, that's about $600,000. I would say if, when we get to that discussion, we have to look at the life of the field versus the maintenance and the yearly cost attached to it as well, and then all the other pieces that come up in with it. And let's see here, I would say, everybody I've talked to has said that having bathrooms and upgraded the toilet building at the stadium is a need, and I think that probably does fall under the need, and I think about all ages of people being out there, our elderly and our young, and our concessions. It would be more than nice. I really do think it is a necessity. There's a lot of toting and a lot of extra hauling and such that we probably should be thinking about getting beyond that now in our future planning. The addition of a parking lot, the east parking lot, I would say that is a need because we should have much more easily accessible parking and being able, not only for our people in need of accommodations through ADA, but our elderly or anyone. It's a long walk from here to there. There's not real, any real close convenient way other than you got to park and you've got to hoof it a little bit, and a lot in some cases. And then in addition to that, we have the ADA bleachers, expanded bleachers for visitors. If we're doing the parking lot and some of these other improvements, that would be the time to consider it. We're done with that.
Yeah.
You won't believe how many hours this took me to do to look like just this little simple. I'm like, why? It doesn't look like much of anything. So if you expected something flashier, I'm sorry, that's yet to come, but I feel like we have a really solid list of priorities that we can talk to and further investigate, which we didn't have, you know, even two months ago.
Right. Yeah. No, this is a good deep dive. I mean, I consider just the time involved in discussing each one of these items. I mean, yeah, there is a lot of work that's been put into this already.
So this second sheet, it's just like a handy, dandy sheet for you. It's everything from here, not everything, it's the priorities that I've captured in here if you want to take a look. And I tried to divide it up by, is it a building need? Is it a safety or security issue? And some of them are multiple. I just sometimes don't want to go through a fourteen-page document. You prefer to say, what did they say about the sugar camp, you know, and you can just get a quick look there at that. So that's it. Do you have any other questions for me at this point?
So the next step is getting with NEXUS and telling them what our...
Yes. Yes. Yes, that's what I had had, I had them put it on hold until we completed our meetings here, and so then I'm going to go ahead and get in contact with Ron Brown and set up a meeting with him, first he and I first, so we can weed through what we need to weed through, and then it would look to me like we would bring back the administrative team and speak with him, and some of these projections of what if we would have a build at Sugar Camp? What would that look like? So they can give us some more direction with Brian Winterley and that architect engineering part of it. And then the big question is the survey questions and the timing of how that rolls out. I think that timing is going to be very, very important. We have to have answers before we have questions posed, you know, like, are we comfortable with this or not, or...
And as far as the deferred maintenance, maintenance projects and stuff, there's a fair amount there.
Yes, there is.
And is that something that we can do in-house? And if we do, how do we tackle it?
Yeah.
And at what priority, what rate? Because there's a lot of it in here that, and I don't have, I think it's good to look at it internally, because there are a lot of advantages doing that.
Yep. But you have to also weigh in the time and manpower and cost-effectiveness, too, which I've mentioned in a few of those. And you don't do it all in one summer. You know, you have to have it really well thought out.
So meeting with the NEXUS group, when are you thinking that we should be doing that, Terry?
Well, I wasn't thinking, you as the board at this point, I don't know.
So you're going to sit down with them?
I need to meet with them and administratively bring them back there first. So that would be a few months down the road, I would say.
Okay. Got it.
I think that would be a good idea. Get a, you know, you've got your priority list. Give it to them so that they can narrow down and be a little bit more specific than what they have. I mean, granted, what they have is good, but we could really maybe explore options once that list is, now that it's narrowed down, so.
Very good.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you very much for putting this on the work.
You're welcome.
It's less pages than what we started with, so.
[laughing]
We're making progress.
Yes. Ooh, maybe I should have said, let's have that evaluation after Mike's gone.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions, comments on that? Okay. All right. Well, thank you again for putting all that time and effort to you and your staff, administration. Yeah. Well done. Next, we go to the school forest camp three update report.
Okay. So since our last regular meeting, the hearing was held to take on the second motion that was made to, we had asked to dismiss the second case that was brought forward by Leo Krevakis and Rebecca Nicky, and that resulted in the court saying no, that they wanted to go ahead and not dismiss it because it might answer further questions for the future. So in talking with our attorney, Ron Stadler, we discussed what that means because we ultimately have the right, if we want to be building the parking lot or whatever we want to do, we can do that as long as we're not infringing on the wetland area. The thing that he advised us to do is to make sure we're using the delineations that was provided by the petitioners or attorneys in casework because they overturned the work that was done by MSA and by the DNR. In a further discussion, he said he would like to reach out to the Krevakis and Nickys and talk to them about what is the intention. If we have pulled this off of our plan, which I shouldn't say if, we have pulled it off of our plan, what is, what is the purpose to continue going forward? Because we don't have the intention to build a trap range on that piece of property. So he, when we left our last conversation, he was reaching out to their attorneys, and he was going to respond back to us.
Okay. All right.
Have you spoken with MSA at all?
I have. And it's not on the agenda. How much do you want me to share?
I just was curious, I guess.
I have spoken...
It's not on the agenda, so it's fine. I was just, that's good enough for me.
I will have a lot more to share with you. I pursued discussion with Mr. Kreisel and with some of the supervisor capacity at MSA, and they're going to get back with me in the next two weeks with some more formalized ideas.
Okay. Very good.
It's a school forest update, so that is kind of an...
It kinda is, yeah. Yeah. I could give you more if you want more.
Yeah. Just probably just connect with Terry, give her a call.
Yeah.
Perfect. Anybody else as well?
Happy to do so.
Okay. All right. Next, we go to district-related positive happenings.
I have one. I've been waiting a long time to share this. So I was at a local coffee shop not too long ago, just minding my own business, hard to, I know, hard to imagine sometimes, but I was. And this lady, community member, family member, was chatting with the coffee staff and talking about their student, and I was, of course, done eavesdropping. And so, you know, it was a small area. So anyways, so then she decided, she must have seen that I was eavesdropping, so then she introduced me into the conversation, and I did not know this lady. I only know her name now because it came back around. Another community member came to me and said, "I heard you met this..." It's just a small, small town. Anyways, I was moved to tears in the coffee shop because of how wonderful this family member was talking about the awesome stuff that's going on in the school for their particular student. And, I mean, I was like, I was supposed to come and get coffee that day because this was like the most beautiful thing that has happened. And so then I told her who I was, and that I was on the school board, and oh my gosh, I mean, it was, I mean, it was a beautiful thing. So thank you for everything that you do every day, all of you, because it's making a big impact. And then, like I said, then another community member stopped me a couple of weeks later and said, "Oh, I hear you met so-and-so." And again, I completely forgot her name because that's just, I was so moved. And, you know, they said they met you and da-da-da-da. So it was just a beautiful thing. So a lot of, it was, and again, sometimes I'm afraid to say that I'm on the school board, but this time I knew it was okay. And it was a beautiful thing. And it was, I mean, I could just start crying now. It was just amazingly beautiful and just a very positive. So I've been wanting to share that with everybody, so. So thank you for all that you do, all of you, because it's felt.
Makes me being on the school board easier, right? Very good. Yeah. Others?
Elementary spelling bee was last, late last month. First place finisher was Malachi Volkman there. We have our geography, sorry, the geography bee was last month. They were spelling bee tomorrow. And then the other one I wanted to share was, Mr. Waltz's fifth grade did their model head projects on historical figures. I got to go to that. It was, it's always fun to go, and the kids give their little speeches, and you get to ask them questions and find out how much they really learned. They're excited. It was fun. So those were my two.
We started intramural basketball junior high lunchtime, but tried to get all the girls to get in with the boys, but I just can't get them to do it. I don't do it. We're working on it, but it's been fun. Kids are enjoying it. We put up little stats on the walls, you know, after the game so they can see it. So it helps with the academic lunch, because they want to be able to be eligible to play, so they make sure they can be missing homework. So hopefully that stays the way it is.
Yeah.
Even though the girls aren't playing, it still sounds like they're enjoying it anyways.
Enjoying it anyways.
I hope so.
And this week, after Mad Money, I posted on social media about the event and I put a plug in for our requirement for personal finance in there. And the comments on that post were phenomenal from the community. So there was high support for any type of financial literacy that we're doing in the district.
Excellent. Yeah.
As Jen mentioned, the Mad Money event was a success again. We'll continue to do that as long as we keep getting invited back for sure. Forensics team recently punched everybody through to the state competition. So everybody getting through districts, which is, that's pretty rare. Super cool. Soul Ensemble, we had quite a list. You can reference one of Jen's historical posts there as far as, I mean, she did a nice job with pictures and everything. But a lot of Soul Ensemble kids made it through who were in Class A. So if they get a one rating in the class, I believe I'm understanding this right, they get a one rating and a Class A performance, performance level, because of difficulty for what their pieces are. Anyway, lots of kids did get a one rating who had a Class A piece.
It's a one star rating.
Yeah, one star.
Thank you.
Says the X band member.
But I know when you took that picture, there's a lot of kids.
Yeah.
It's a high percentage of our band and choir folks who competed are now going to compete at the state level. So there is nobody looking to fishing. I got some, you better get home, that wasn't the coolest thing, but. Play on. Academic awards program, thank you first of all to all board members that joined us that evening. It's good to see a cool representation of board members. It is, as I say at that banquet, it is the important core stuff about what we're here for. So it's really a cool event to celebrate that with, with our kids. The best turnout I've seen.
Yeah. He is huge.
For that event at the writer's center. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good deal. Another event that the writer's center, I want to make mention of, the Tracy Wick Memorial Pancake Breakfast to support our trap team. This year set another record of $21,000 earned. That's after all the bills are paid. That's, that's, that's clear. So extremely thankful for the community that supports our trap team in that event. That's all. It's good stuff.
Sugar Camp for students participate in Soul Ensemble. I'm not even pretending to know what ratings are. I'm sure they did well. We have our GOB the Friday after spring break, so that will be happening. And then we're doing a lightning tournament tomorrow. Students, no, I'm sorry, on Friday. So students and also some staff members will be participating. So if anybody's looking for a good time, two o'clock in Sugar Camp gym for some lightning.
That'll be entertaining.
I'm just hoping no one tears, what was the ACL, not ACL, Achilles, the last time Eric played it was.
Thought we had a great school spirit at the boys' basketball game down in DC Everest. Great representation. Yeah. Lot of fun. Good stuff. Very good. All right. We'll move on to the WASB correspondence updates.
The only thing I'm going to share is that when we have our new board member seated, I will work with him to get set up for the, you know, regional training for initial board members and that onboarding will begin. I don't have any other information or updates for you on that.
Yeah. They do a nice job with that, so. With your help, it'll be spectacular. We're coming to the end here. For adjournment, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Nobody wanted to go. All right. Motion by Stacy, seconded by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. All right. Motion passes five zero. We are free to go. Alicia, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Alicia.
No problem. See you next month.
All right. Sounds great.
Enjoy spring break, everyone.
You too.